of Commissioners. My name is Chad Brown. I serve as Chairman of the Board, as well as Commissioner of Riverbend Township. I would like to welcome our viewers and thank Spectrum Cable and AT&amp;T for making it possible for our citizens, for our television audience. I would like to present your Gaston County Commission, beginning on my far right.
Alan Frayley, Chair of Township.
Good evening, Scott Sheehan, Gastonia Township.
Good evening, Jim Bailey, South Point Township.
Good evening, Kathy Cloninger, Dallas Township.
Welcome to Harley B. Gaston Center, Bob Hovis, Crowder's Mountain Township.
Good evening, Tom Kiger, Gastonia Township.
Thank you very much for those opening remarks at this time. We'll have the invocation given by Commissioner Hovis, the Pledge of Allegiance given by Commissioner Cloninger. If you please stand.
If you will, please bow with me. Gracious Father, we come to you tonight, understanding that life throws us many types of challenges. Father, all we ask that you provide in us the Spirit, the faith, and the understanding to step up to those challenges as we lead Gaston County. We ask that we be ever mindful, all of the residents in Gaston County, those who have a lot, those who have very, very little. It's our responsibility to help them in every way that we can, and to be a sounding board to help where the county has the opportunity to help meet their needs as citizens of this great county. We ask that you do this in Christ's name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item tonight is public hearing. Let me put this microphone, please. The Commission will now take citizens' comments on six public hearings. Comments will be taken from the following issues: zoning map change REZ-216, zoning map change REZ-220, zoning map change REZ-223, EDC incentive grant for Project Family 2025, EDC incentive grant for Project East Coast, and EDC incentive grant for Project DeLorean. Sounds exciting. Before we begin, let me outline the rules and procedures of the hearing. Citizens wishing to make comment will be recognized by the Chair and then requested to step to the microphone for their comments. Citizens' comments tonight will be limited to three minutes. Citizens will state their name and address for the record. All questions shall be directed to the Chair for response. Any ruling needing a response should the Chair will hear for the hearing. Do I have a motion to go into public hearing?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Kiger, all in favor. It is unanimous, we are now in public hearing. The County Commission will take citizens' comments on public hearings. Zoning map change REZ-216, GRY3 LLC is the applicant. Ms. Peyton Wiggins, plan or two, Building and Development Services will provide a brief overview. Once she has completed her comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Ms. Wiggins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This case REZ-25-CR3-CR4-CR0216 was previously heard at the May 27 Board of Commissioners meeting. During that meeting, the case did not get a final vote, so we're bringing this back for you tonight. To recap, this is a general rezoning request for PID 173490 or 14742 Leisha Riverbend Highway in Stanley. The owners and applicant are GRY3 LLC, and the parcel is 1.09 acres. Currently, the parcel is zoned R1, Single Family Limited Zoning District, with US and CH overlays. And the applicants are looking to rezon to the C1 Light Commercial Zoning District with US and CH overlays. The vicinity map shows the property's location in the northeast quadrant of the county, north of Mount Holly and Stanley city limits. The ortho photo shows the parcel with a mobile home and accessory structure on-site. This ortho photo is from 2022 and has not yet been updated on this map. Based on aerial photography, the property existed like this since at least 1997. However, sometime between 2023 and 2024, all the structures, including the mobile home, were demolished and the property now sits vacant. Earlier this year, the property owner submitted a recombination plat to our office for review. The goal is to combine the subject parcel and PID 173473, which is the property directly to the west, to create one large parcel. PID 173473 is currently zoned C1 Light Commercial, so the applicants are requesting to rezon the subject property to C1 to prevent split zoning across the newly created parcel. The zoning map here shows the current parcel zoning as R1. This area is within a commercial pocket along Leisha Riverbend Highway, with adjacent properties being C1, R1, with C3 and R2 districts in the larger vicinity. We've re-noticed the public hearing on August 7th with mail notices and a sign on-site, all of which in accordance with general statutes. So far, we've received one call about this request. It was a general inquiry, asking about the rezoning and the rehearing process. The caller did not share their contact information nor their opinion on the case. This parcel falls within Area 3, Riverfront Gaston, Northeast Gaston Small Area Plan, within the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The future land use designation is suburban development, which is consistent with the request this evening. This case went before the Gaston County TRC on Wednesday, April 23rd, and there were no major comments at this time. The GCL MPO standard comment letter is attached to your staff packet. The Planning Board heard this request at its May 5 meeting and recommended approval by unanimous 9 to 0 vote. So with that, I ask that the Board receive the staff report and presentation, the applicant presentation, and any public comment, and then make a determination on the request. As always, the Board has the ability to approve, approve with modifications, or to deny the request. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. Any comments from the applicant this time?
Good evening. John Yarber, Patrick Lane, Mount Holly, North Carolina. Mr. Chairman and Council, appreciate the opportunity to be here and have our case reheard. We've been in business since 1981. Our dad, my brother and I are the owners of GRY3, and we relocated from Lincoln County to Gaston County in 2016, rezoning the parcel that Peyton mentioned there at the front of the property to C1. We're a sales and marketing firm, concentrating on packaging materials, and we cover the southeast from Maryland down to Florida over to Alabama. We have converted the office there, the house that was on the property there, to office space, and that's what we use as our landing spot. We currently have an off-site warehouse in South Carolina that, with this additional property zoning to C1, we're toying around with the idea. We don't have sets, plans in stone just yet, but that would certainly be a cost savings for us to have that type of facility moved there, or we have some other ideas to maybe have some office, develop some office suites or somewhat. So we're certainly pleased to have our case reheard, and we just want to be good neighbors, and we have vested interest to have the property be as valuable as possible as our surrounding neighbors there, and we just appreciate your consideration on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any citizens wishing to comment on this issue? Seeing any questions from the Board of Commissioners? Seeing that I am from the Riverbend, I'll speak on it. I want to thank you guys for allowing me to come out and look around your property. Got to know the business a little bit. I feel very comfortable with what's going on out there, so I just wanted to say thank you guys for what you do, for trying to think about business in Gaston County. Any other comments from the Commission? If there are no additional comments, I will declare the public hearing closed. Just to recap, the Planning Board unanimously recommended approval. Do I have a motion to approve?
Sir, move.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Bailey. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Mr. Goldberg, if you please provide a consistency statement to the Clerk.
Yes, sir.
The County Commission will now take citizens' comments on public hearings. Zoning map change REZ-220, Karina Guerrero applicant. Ms. Jamie Leasey, Planning 1, Building and Development Services will provide a brief overview. Once she has completed her comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Ms. Leasey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. REZ-25-03-17-00220 was previously heard at the July 22 Board of Commissioners meeting. During that meeting, the case did not get a final vote, so we're bringing this back for you tonight. To recap, this is a general rezoning request for PID 173490 or 14742 Leisha Riverbend Highway in Stanley. The owners and applicant are GRY3 LLC, and the parcel is 1.09 acres. Currently, the parcel is zoned R1, Single Family Limited Zoning District, with US and CH overlays, and the applicants are looking to rezon to the C1 Light Commercial Zoning District with US and CH overlays. The vicinity map shows the property's location in the northeast quadrant of the county, north of Mount Holly and Stanley city limits. The ortho photo shows the parcel with a mobile home and accessory structure on-site. This ortho photo is from 2022 and has not yet been updated on this map. Based on aerial photography, the property existed like this since at least 1997. However, sometime between 2023 and 2024, all the structures, including the mobile home, were demolished and the property now sits vacant. Earlier this year, the property owner submitted a recombination plat to our office for review. The goal is to combine the subject parcel and PID 173473, which is the property directly to the west, to create one large parcel. PID 173473 is currently zoned C1 Light Commercial, so the applicants are requesting to rezon the subject property to C1 to prevent split zoning across the newly created parcel. The zoning map here shows the current parcel zoning as R1. This area is within a commercial pocket along Leisha Riverbend Highway, with adjacent properties being C1, R1, with C3 and R2 districts in the larger vicinity. We re-noticed the public hearing on August 7th with mail notices and a sign on-site, all of which in accordance with general statutes. So far, we've received one call about this request. It was a general inquiry, asking about the rezoning and the rehearing process. The caller did not share their contact information nor their opinion on the case. This parcel falls within Area 3, Riverfront Gaston, Northeast Gaston Small Area Plan, within the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The future land use designation is suburban development, which is consistent with the request this evening. This case went before the Gaston County TRC on Wednesday, April 23rd, and there were no major comments at this time. The GCL MPO standard comment letter is attached to your staff packet. The Planning Board heard this request at its May 5 meeting and recommended approval by unanimous 9 to 0 vote. So with that, I ask that the Board receive the staff report and presentation, the applicant presentation, and any public comment, and then make a determination on the request. As always, the Board has the ability to approve, approve with modifications, or to deny the request. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. Any comments from the applicant this time?
Good evening. John Yarber, Patrick Lane, Mount Holly, North Carolina. Mr. Chairman and Council, appreciate the opportunity to be here and have our case reheard. We've been in business since 1981. Our dad, my brother and I are the owners of GRY3, and we relocated from Lincoln County to Gaston County in 2016, rezoning the parcel that Peyton mentioned there at the front of the property to C1. We're a sales and marketing firm, concentrating on focusing on packaging materials, and we cover the southeast from Maryland down to Florida over to Alabama. We have converted the office there, the house that was on the property there, to office space, and that's what we use as our landing spot. We currently have an off-site warehouse in South Carolina that, with this additional property zoning to C1, we're toying around with the idea. We don't have sets, plans in stone just yet, but that would certainly be a cost savings for us to have that type of facility moved there, or we have some other ideas to maybe have some office, develop some office suites or somewhat. So we're certainly pleased to have our case reheard, and we just want to be good neighbors, and we have a vested interest to have the property be as valuable as possible as our surrounding neighbors there, and we just appreciate your consideration on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any citizens wishing to comment on this issue? Seeing any questions from the Board of Commissioners? Seeing that I am from the Riverbend, I'll speak on it. I want to thank you guys for allowing me to come out and look around your property. Got to know the business a little bit. I feel very comfortable with what's going on out there, so I just wanted to say thank you guys for what you do, for trying to think about business in Gaston County. Any other comments from the Commission? If there are no additional comments, I will declare the public hearing closed. Just to recap, the Planning Board unanimously recommended approval. Do I have a motion to approve?
Sir, move.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Bailey. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Mr. Goldberg, if you please provide a consistency statement to the Clerk.
Yes, sir.
The County Commission will now take citizens' comments on public hearings. Zoning map change REZ-220, Karina Guerrero applicant. Ms. Jamie Leasey, Planning 1, Building and Development Services will provide a brief overview. Once she has completed her comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Ms. Leasey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. REZ-25-03-17-00220 was previously heard at the July 22 Board of Commissioners meeting. During that hearing, the request did not receive a formal vote, so we are bringing this case back to you tonight. To recap, this is a general rezoning request for parcel ID 179668, located at the 1200, 1300 block of Charles Raper Jonas Highway in Mount Holly. The applicant, Karina Guerrero, is requesting to rezon the entire 2.48 acre parcel from the RS20 Single Family 20,000 square foot zoning district with urban standards and corridor highway overlays, to the C1 Light Commercial Zoning District with urban standards and corridor highway overlays. The subject property is located west of Mount Holly. The aerial photography shows the lot is currently vacant. The subject property is surrounded by commercial, industrial, and residential zoning districts. This map shows who was re-notified about tonight's public hearing, in accordance with general statute. We have received no calls about this request. The proposed zoning district is in compliance with the future land use map. The GCL MPO stated there are no funded transportation projects in the vicinity. The Gaston County Police voiced concerns about noise complaints from neighboring properties and potential traffic issues with vehicles entering and exiting NC 27, depending on the type and size of events permitted under the requested zoning. The Planning Board recommended approval of this request by unanimous 7 to 0 vote, and with that, I ask you to receive the staff report and presentation. As always, the Board has the ability to approve, recommend, to approve, with modifications, or to deny the request. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. Any comments from the applicant this time?
Good evening. John Yarber, Patrick Lane, Mount Holly, North Carolina. Mr. Chairman and Council, appreciate the opportunity to be here and have our case reheard. We've been in business since 1981. Our dad, my brother and I are the owners of GRY3, and we relocated from Lincoln County to Gaston County in 2016, rezoning the parcel that Peyton mentioned there at the front of the property to C1. We're a sales and marketing firm, concentrating on focusing on packaging materials, and we cover the southeast from Maryland down to Florida over to Alabama. We have converted the office there, the house that was on the property there, to office space, and that's what we use as our landing spot. We currently have an off-site warehouse in South Carolina that, with this additional property zoning to C1, we're toying around with the idea. We don't have sets, plans in stone just yet, but that would certainly be a cost savings for us to have that type of facility moved there, or we have some other ideas to maybe have some office, develop some office suites or somewhat. So we're certainly pleased to have our case reheard, and we just want to be good neighbors, and we have a vested interest to have the property be as valuable as possible as our surrounding neighbors there, and we just appreciate your consideration on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any citizens wishing to comment on this issue? Seeing any questions from the Board of Commissioners? Seeing that I am from the Riverbend, I'll speak on it. I want to thank you guys for allowing me to come out and look around your property. Got to know the business a little bit. I feel very comfortable with what's going on out there, so I just wanted to say thank you guys for what you do, for trying to think about business in Gaston County. Any other comments from the Commission? If there are no additional comments, I will declare the public hearing closed. Just to recap, the Planning Board unanimously recommended approval. Do I have a motion to approve?
Sir, move.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Bailey. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Mr. Goldberg, if you please provide a consistency statement to the Clerk.
Yes, sir.
The County Commission will now take citizens' comments on public hearings. Zoning map change REZ-220, Karina Guerrero applicant. Ms. Jamie Leasey, Planning 1, Building and Development Services will provide a brief overview. Once she has completed her comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Ms. Leasey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. REZ-25-03-17-00220 was previously heard at the July 22 Board of Commissioners meeting. During that hearing, the request did not receive a formal vote, so we are bringing this case back to you tonight. To recap, this is a general rezoning request for parcel ID 179668, located at the 1200, 1300 block of Charles Raper Jonas Highway in Mount Holly. The applicant, Karina Guerrero, is requesting to rezon the entire 2.48 acre parcel from the RS20 Single Family 20,000 square foot zoning district with urban standards and corridor highway overlays, to the C1 Light Commercial Zoning District with urban standards and corridor highway overlays. The subject property is located west of Mount Holly. The aerial photography shows the lot is currently vacant. The subject property is surrounded by commercial, industrial, and residential zoning districts. This map shows who was re-notified about tonight's public hearing, in accordance with general statute. We have received no calls about this request. The proposed zoning district is in compliance with the future land use map. The GCL MPO stated there are no funded transportation projects in the vicinity. The Gaston County Police voiced concerns about noise complaints from neighboring properties and potential traffic issues with vehicles entering and exiting NC 27, depending on the type and size of events permitted under the requested zoning. The Planning Board recommended approval of this request by unanimous 7 to 0 vote, and with that, I ask you to receive the staff report and presentation. As always, the Board has the ability to approve, to recommend, to approve, with modifications, or to deny the request. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my presentation, and the applicant is here to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, ma'am. Any comments from the applicant this time? Any citizens wishing to comment at this time?
Josh, before you start, is that what you guys were signing up for on this as well, or you wanted to sign for something else?
Mine was separate. Hers was for this. Yes, yep. Name's Joshua Brown. Reside at 1149 Knowles Drive, Mount Holly, North Carolina. Spoke last month to this regard as well. Mr. Chairman, thank you for this, and County Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, you should have received four to five emails from Mr. Sigmund, Thomas, myself, Philip Loughlin, and Cindy Loughlin, who all reside around this property as well. Like I spoke last month, high-traffic area, two-lane road. Lot of traffic coming from Lincoln County, coming through to get to 485. Every morning, it's backed up. It's on a hill. We've had repeated wrecks here with the crest of that hill and traffic that's going through there. Currently, right now, today, before I left coming over here, drove by it. I...
Name and address for the record. All questions shall be directed to the chair for response. Any, any ruling needing a response, so the chair will hear for the hearing. Do I have a motion to go into public hearing?
Sir, move.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Keger. All in favor? It is unanimous. We are now in public hearing. The county commission will take citizens' comments on public hearings. Zoning map change, REZ-216-GRY3LLC is the applicant. Ms. Peyton Wiggins, plan or two. Building and Development Services will provide a brief overview. Once she has completed her comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Ms. Wiggins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This case, REZ-25-CR3-CR4-CR0216, was previously heard at the May 27th Board of Commissioners meeting. During that meeting, the case did not get a final vote, so we're bringing this back for you tonight. To recap, this is a general rezoning request for PID 173490 or 14742 Leisha River Bend Highway in Stanley. The owners and applicant are GRY3LLC, and the parcel is 1.09 acres. Currently, the parcel is zoned R1, single-family limited zoning district with US and CH overlays, and the applicants are looking to rezone to the C1 light commercial zoning district with US and CH overlays. The vicinity map shows the property's location in the northeast quadrant of the county, north of Mount Holly and Stanley city limits. The ortho photo shows the parcel with a mobile home and accessory structure on site. This ortho photo is from 2022 and has not yet been updated on this map. Based on aerial photography, the property existed like this since at least 1997. However, sometime between 2023 and 2024, all the structures, including the mobile home, were demolished, and the property now sits vacant. Earlier this year, the property owner submitted a recombination plat to our office for review. The goal is to combine the subject parcel and PID 173473, which is the property directly to the west, to create one large parcel. PID 173473 is currently zoned C1 light commercial, so the applicants are requesting to rezone the subject property to C1 to prevent split zoning across the newly created parcel. The zoning map here shows the current parcel zoning as R1. This area is within a commercial pocket along Leisha River Bend Highway, with adjacent properties being C1, R1, with C3 and R2 districts in the larger vicinity. We re-notice the public hearing on August 7th with mail notices and a sign on site, all of which in accordance with general statutes. So far, we've received one call about this request. It was a general inquiry, asking about the rezoning and the rehearing process. The caller did not share their contact information nor their opinion on the case. This parcel falls within Area 3, Riverfront Gaston, Northeast Gaston, small area plan within the comprehensive land use plan. The future land use designation is suburban development, which is consistent with the request this evening. This case went before the Gaston County TRC on Wednesday, April 23rd, and there were no major comments at this time. The GCL MPO standard comment letter is attached to your staff packet. The planning board heard this request at its May 5th meeting and recommended approval by unanimous nine to zero vote. So with that, I ask that the board receive the staff report and presentation, the applicant presentation, and any public comment, and then determine, uh, make a determination on the request. As always, the board has the ability to approve, approve with modifications, or to deny the request. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. Any comments from the applicant at this time?
Good evening. John Yarber, Patrick Lane, Mount Holly, North Carolina. Mr. Chairman and counsel, appreciate the opportunity to be here and have our case reheard. We're a, been in business since 1981. Our dad, my brother and I are the owners of GRY3, and we relocated to, from Lincoln County to Gaston County in 2016, rezone, rezoning the parcel that Peyton mentioned there at the front of the property to C1. We're a sales and marketing firm, concentrating on, focusing on packaging materials, and we cover the southeast from Maryland down to Florida over to Alabama. We have our, converted the office there, the house that was on the property there to office space, and that's what we use as our landing spot. We currently have a off-site warehouse in South Carolina that, with this additional property zoning to C1, we're toying around with the idea. We don't have sets, plans in stone just yet, but we, that would certainly be a cost savings for us to have that type of facility moved there, or we have some other ideas to maybe have some office, develop some office suites or somewhat. So we're certainly pleased to have our case reheard, and we just want to be good neighbors, and we have a vested interest to have the property be as valuable as possible as our surrounding neighbors there, and we just appreciate your consideration on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any citizens wishing to comment on this issue? Seeing any questions from the Board of Commissioners? Seeing that I am from the River Bend, I'll speak on it. I want to thank you guys for allowing me to get, come out and look around your property. Got to know the business a little bit. I feel very comfortable with what's going on out there, so I just wanted to say thank you guys for what you do, for trying to think about business in Gaston County. Any other comments from the Commission? If there are no additional comments, I will declare the public hearing closed. Just to recap, the planning board unanimously recommended approval. Do I have a motion to approve?
Sir, move.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Bailey. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Mr. Goldberg, if you please provide a consistency statement to the clerk.
Yes, sir.
The county commission will now take citizens' comments on public hearings. Zoning map change, REZ-220 Karina Guerrero applicant. Ms. Jamie Leasey, Planning One, Building and Development Services will provide a brief overview. Once she has completed her comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Ms. Leasey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. REZ-25-03-17-00220 was previously heard at the July 22th Board of Commissioners meeting. During that hearing request did not, during that hearing, the request did not receive a formal vote, so we are bringing this case back to you tonight. To recap, this is a general rezoning request for parcel ID 179668, located at the 1,200, 1,300 block of Charles Raper Jonas Highway in Mount Holly. The applicant, Karina Guerrero, is requesting to rezone the entire 2.48 acre parcel from the RS20, single-family 20,000 square foot zoning district with urban standards and corridor highway overlays, to the C1 light commercial zoning district with urban standards and corridor highway overlays. The subject property is located west of Mount Holly. The aerial photography shows the lot is currently vacant. The subject property is surrounded by commercial, industrial, and residential zoning duristic districts. This map shows who was re-notified about tonight's public hearing in accordance with general statute. We have received no calls about this request. The proposed zoning district is in compliance with the future land use map. The GCL MPO stated there are no funded transportation projects in the vicinity. The Gaston County Police voiced concerns about noise complaints from neighboring properties and potential traffic issues with vehicles entering and exiting NC 27, depending on the type and size of events permitted under the requested zoning. The planning board recommended approval of this request by unanimous seven to zero vote, and with that, I ask you to receive the staff report and presentation. As always, the board has the ability to approve, to recommend, to approve with modifications or to deny the request. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my presentation, and the applicant is here to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, ma'am. Any comments from the applicant at this time? Any citizens wishing to comment at this time?
Josh, before you start, is that what you guys were signing up for on this as well? Or you wanted to sign for something else?
Mine was separate. Hers was for this.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yep. Name's Joshua Brown, reside at 1149 Knowles Drive, Mount Holly, North Carolina. Spoke last month to this regard as well. Mr. Chairman, thank you for this, and county commissioners. Mr. Chairman, you should have received four to five emails from Mr. Sigmund, Thomas, myself, Philip Loughlin, and Cindy Loughlin, who all reside around this property as well. Like I spoke last month, high-traffic area, two-lane road. Lot of traffic coming from Lincoln County, coming through to get to 485. Every morning, it's backed up. It's on a hill. We've had repeated wrecks here with the crest of that hill and traffic that's going through there. Currently, right now, today, before I left coming over here, drove by it, and the cud that had been cleared out, it's grown back over. There's tons of busted-up concrete that's been dumped in there for, by some dump trucks and everything. It's just, it's just not anything that needs to be gone right there with the families that have lived there forever. I know Cindy has lived there since 1989. The Sigmunds have lived there. Their family was the Craig's, and they own that property and have seen that, so none of the residents that live directly around that want to see that with kids coming through there, playing in between on that picture that we showed across the street, the wooded patch area. Kids between the two houses play there all the time, just excessive foot traffic from that venue. And then not to mention, on the backside with the railroad right-of-way, it's known issues from the properties on the other side of the, of the railroad tracks. County police have been out there multiple times for drugs, things like that. Just having that access right there is just something that's going to cause issues along the road, much less, you know, with added more traffic and things like that. So I would request that you deny this request, and of all the emails that you've received, all of them were to deny it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Board, for the opportunity. Susan Barsnica, 1150 Knowles Drive. As Josh mentioned, my family has lived here for a long time. The parcel in question was actually part of my great-grandparents' farm. As Josh has mentioned, we've got traffic concerns. The traffic is so bad that folks will bypass 27 and come out onto Knowles, speeding, which there impacts the children that are in the area that play. Without proper traffic controls, which we have failed to see up to this point with the influx of people in the last 10 years, especially since I've lived here. My concern is, it's an event center. I understand it's a business. You want to be busy as many days of the week as possible. However, to create such a building, you're going to need stormwater management, and with it being, last I saw, either a 3,000 or 4,000 square foot building with coordinated parking, that's going to take up quite a deal of space. Where's the water going to go? We already know stormwater management controls. The 100-year storm is no longer truly a 100-year storm. I would be concerned for the neighbors behind this property, for the railroad, and for the impact, of course, to the surrounding area. Of course, I am being selfish. This is part of my history, but didn't have the blessing to be born here due to my dad's service. I grew up outside DC, but I have seen sprawl without it being planned for properly. Obviously, this is where we've already been to. This is going to be part of it. I request respectfully that you deny this, particularly without having plans released in terms of how big of an event center and what their plans are in terms of hours of operation, liquor license, et cetera. Thank you.
Any other citizens wishing to comment at this time on this issue? Seeing none from the Board of Commissioners? Seeing that I do represent the River Bend, I'll speak again. Just to check again, this was the one that were the same, the county police had the state, the only one they had done that to. So I want to make that noted, that that was in there for that, because I don't really, I worry about the location, proximity where we're at. If, I think if there was a different egress out, I think it would help this situation, so maybe they can, for me, I don't, I don't like the proximity to the stoplight and everything, but that's just what I wanted to plan on that. Any other questions from the Board at this time? Seeing none, I would declare the public hearing closed. Just to recap, the planning board has unanimously recommended approval of this. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Keger, seconded by, I will make it myself, just because we have to vote on this, myself, Ms. Donna, on that, since we're doing seconds for all zoning matters now. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It is unanimous, Madam, to oppose. Mr. Goldberg, if you please give that consistency statement to Ms. Donna, please.
Yes, sir.
The county commission will now take citizens' comments on public hearings. Zoning map change, REZ-223 McKenzie Marie Myers applicant, Ms. Jamie Leasey, Planning One, Building and Development Services will provide a brief overview. Once she has completed her comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Ms. Leasey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. REZ-25-03-25-00223 is a general rezoning request for parcel ID 171661, located at 220 F.L. Myers Road. The applicant, McKenzie Myers, is requesting to rezone the 4.06 acre parcel from the R1 single-family limited zoning district with US overlay to the R2 single-family moderate zoning district with US overlay. The subject property is located east of Dallas and north of Ranlow. The aerial photograph shows the lot is surrounded by a variety of housing types, including a mobile home park to the southeast. The zoning map shows the surrounding zoning districts of R1, R2, and R3 in the general vicinity of the subject property. This map shows who was notified about tonight's public hearing. A sign was placed on the site, and notices were sent out in accordance with general statutes. We received one general inquiry about this request. This is a list of property owners who received a mail notice. While researching this request, we noticed an additional structure on the property. The building addressed at 220 is the original building. The manufactured home was placed on the property in 2017, with the condition that this original home would be removed. Staff is comfortable moving forward with the rezoning, as the homeowners are working on removal of the building, and the removal can be confirmed during the subdivision and permitting phases of the project. The lot is serviced by a private well and septic system and is accessed off an NCDOT maintained road. The request was served by the TRC. The GCL MPO provided a letter stating there are no funded transportation improvements in the immediate vicinity, and there were no additional TRC comments at this time. The subject parcel is located in Area 3, Riverfront Gaston of the comprehensive land use plan. The future land use designation is rural. Rural areas consist of plenty of open space, along with farmstead-style housing, as well as agribusiness. This is a default designation for Gaston County. This request was heard by the planning board at its August meeting, and the board recommended approval by unanimous seven to zero vote. With that, I ask that you receive the staff report and presentation. As always, the board has the ability to recommend, to approve, to approve with modification or to deny the request. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my presentation. I stand by for any questions, and the applicant is here to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you, ma'am. Any comments from the applicant at this time? Seeing none, any citizens wishing to comment on this issue at this time?
Thank you. Deanna Frankie, and we're 509 Dallas Spencer Mountain Road, adjacent to the parcel that's being discussed this evening. My biggest concern is with the division or subdivision with no planned utilities of city sewer or water, what that means as far as impacting us being an adjacent property, and wondering if there are future plans for that, and what impact that would be.
You'll just have a seat right there.
Sure.
You said the applicant's here, Ms. Leasey?
She is, yes.
And that's what, you said it was private well, correct?
That's right.
Private well and septic?
That's correct.
So it's by itself?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, where's Brian? If you don't mind, after this, try to do it right now. If you don't mind taking them, I think they just had questions more along what they were trying to figure out, more than trying to do some things about questioning, so. If you, after, regardless of what happens, Mr. Skiba will answer a lot of those questions on some of the things that are there on site. Any other comments from any other citizens at this time? Seeing none, any questions from the Board of Commissioners? Mr. Hovis.
I just have one. Is this site currently conforming with existing zoning regulations?
We didn't have any non-conforming issues. They are removing that building that was noticed at the time of this application. They have that extra building on site. They're in the process of removing that now.
Okay. So it's, the other building that's on site, is it, does it conform or is it non-conforming?
So it's considered existing non-conforming.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just trying to understand, a single-family lot, and they're just asking for a different zone, there wouldn't be an additional need for well or septic if the current one is in, is conforming to current health regulations?
That, that's correct.
That's the reason I was asking.
Thank you. Any other questions from the Board? Commissioner Sheehan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the staff report, I noticed that building and zoning permits were issued originally in 2016, requiring the removal of the original house.
That's right.
And that wasn't, that didn't occur.
Correct.
Why?
I don't know. I was not here then.
We, we looked into it, and we don't have an answer as to why it wasn't looked into at the final zoning permit. The zoning compliance inspection, that is something that we do now, but our staff was not here during that time.
It's just concerning to me, that's been nine years, and it wasn't followed through on, and now they're coming back asking for it again.
Yes, and we, and I think as she said in her report, we can do another check at the subdivision process, so in order for them to subdivide, we wouldn't allow that subdivision to go through until that building's removed, and if, we wouldn't. But if it got past that, we wouldn't issue another zoning permit for another house until all of the non-conforming, the existing non-conformities are addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. That's going to lead me just to one comment, Jamie. We're talking about it for, it will align with the existing home, I guess they're wanting to put on. Where are we currently with? I was looking at this, I mean, the map is the one I'm trying to find, sorry, hold on one second. It's the, the map with, has the topo, not the topo, the one before the topo. Get it over here. This property, I mean, in the back, I mean, I would assume we can't get anything back there in the back if they're trying to put something back there to be conforming, correct?
That, that's correct. My understanding is, the goal is to do a family subdivision to create a one-acre lot towards the north part of the property, so right as you're coming in off of the access, and then it's to place another home in that subdivision, or that new lot.
And we're going to move, we're going to remove one existing?
Yes. So the current zoning is R1. Both existing homes are double-wide manufactured homes. It's likely that they permitted, and they being just prior staff, permitted the addition of the existing double-wide home because there was one prior. So if it was existing non-conforming prior, they were allowed to replace it under non-conforming rules. And then if this rezoning is approved, the applicant would be allowed to put another home on the new lot being created in the future.
I guess I will go to you as about conditions.
We can't condition a general rezoning, but we can condition, like the subdivision plat, if they choose to move forward with this route, we can condition that that has to be addressed before the subdivision is approved. Or we can condition a zoning permit similar to the first one, that it needs to be removed prior to the final zoning inspection.
I have issues, I guess I should say. I don't want to, I don't want to hurt anybody's chances, but my problem is, if we have a, if we have something that hasn't been removed, because it wasn't over nine years ago, and now we're having other issues right now, I'd rather see it, I don't want to say fail and come back, but I'd rather see some conditions put on it to where we knew that these things were put in place and our standards were followed by it before I would give approval.
Could we possibly hold off on a vote and allow them time to address the non-conforming issue prior to closing out the case?
Mr. Sheehan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Jamie, you mentioned about the one-acre parcels for a family estate.
Yes.
How many parcels are we looking at here, or they looking at total?
I don't believe we have a formal submission for a plat, but based off of the lot, the most that they could do, what's your acreage? Four acres. So the most that they could do would be creating one-acre lots off of an easement. With it being four acres, the most that they would be able to create is four lots.
Going to ask for a motion to table. Motion made, yeah, continue, sorry. Continue your work. Continue with Commissioner Keger being the...
Motionee.
Commissioner Keger be the motion, seconded by Commissioner Fraley.
Mr. Chairman, when would you like to rehear this, maybe?
Upon staff getting some information, A, how about next month? Maybe?
Should be.
Yeah, next month. All right, next month sounds good. And that does not require a vote, correct? It does? It does? Okay. So motion made by Commissioner Keger, seconded by Commissioner Fraley. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Now, what, Mr.? All right, thank you, ladies, for your help. The county commission will now take citizens' comments on public hearing to approve Gaston County Level 1 incentive grant to authorize Gaston County to enter into an economic development agreement with Project Family 2025. Mr. Donnie Hicks, Executive Director of EDC, will provide a brief overview. Once he has completed his comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Mr. Hicks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we have three tonight, and we'll start with Project Family. This is an existing company in the county. They plan to expand by four and a half million dollars and create 30 jobs at an average wage above $52,000 a year, which would be our county average. We will be going to the corresponding municipality in early September to ask the municipality to match our grant amount.
Thank you, sir. Any citizens wishing to comment on this at this time? Seeing any questions from the Board of Commissioners? If there are no additional comments, I will declare the public hearing closed. I would like a motion to approve. That goes by Mr. Hovis.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Sheehan. Any discussion?
Under discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, sir.
It's said often that we don't do things to promote existing businesses. I just want to highlight this to the public, that this action tonight is, is helping an existing business to expand in terms of what they're currently doing. We don't just throw these skittles out to everybody and his brother that comes in here, but we do take it under advisement, and this is one of those, and I just want to make sure everyone understands that for the record. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, got a motion by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Sheehan. No more discussion. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The county commission will now take citizens' comments on public hearing to approve Gaston County Level 4 incentive grant to authorize Gaston County to enter into a project economic development agreement with Project East Coast. Mr. Donnie Hicks, Executive Director of EDC, will provide a brief overview. Once he has completed his comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Mr. Hicks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Project East Coast is seeking a Level 4 grant for an expansion investment of about $116 million. We'll be going to the corresponding municipality in September to ask them to match our Level 4 grant. That meeting should be scheduled soon, if not already, and we will go back to them and obviously represent this project with the city also. We've been working with their taxing authority, taxing people in the company, and this, we hope, is the first of several more expansions to come.
Thank you, sir. Any citizens wishing to comment on this at this time? Any questions from the Board of Commissioners? Mr. Hovis? Oh, sorry. Motion made by Commissioner Fraley, seconded by Commissioner Sheehan. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. If there are no additional comments, I went to close that public hearing, but we did that, so. Good luck. Excuse me? The Gaston County Commission will now take citizens' comments on public hearing to approve a Gaston County Level 4 incentive grant pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 158-7-1, and authorize Gaston County to enter into an economic development agreement with EDA with Project Delorean. Mr. Donnie Hicks, Executive Director of EDC, provided a brief overview. Once completed his comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Mr. Hicks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As opposed to the previous two projects, which are expansions of local companies, this is a project that we are pursuing. It's being run by Site Location Consultant in the ED, North County Economic Development Partnership. They would invest approximately $67 million, create 513 jobs over the next five years with an average annual wage at or above the county's average wage of $52,180. This is likely a multi-phase project. This represents the initial investment. The job creation is the total job creation for the entire project over five years. We will also be going to the corresponding municipality relatively soon to ask them to match our incentive policy. I'll be there to represent the county and the project for that, and this is being done in an anticipatory move. We're not sure that this project is going to come, but the Site Location Consultant has requested that we do this to be competitive and give the company a clear picture of what their financial incentives would be from both us and the state of North Carolina.
Any citizens wishing to comment on? Yes, ma'am, please. You had to come to the podium, sorry. Please state your name and address for the record.
Susan Barsnica, 1149, 1150 Knowles Drive, Mount Holly. I just didn't catch what kind of business this was going to be. You went rather quickly. And so I was asking them...
I didn't understand what she said.
If it could be repeated. What kind of business is this? What kind of business is this going to be?
The project names, we don't, not allowed to, the state will have to declare, the governor will have to declare that once the project has been fulfilled from the, the Commerce Department does not allow us to have that. The only person who would have that would have to be killed tonight to get that out of it. But I'm sure Marty's over there with the DeLorean people, but we have no idea, ma'am.
Alright. My question, just wanting to know what kind of businesses we were including in the area. And we know the areas have a number of environmental issues and events, so I wanna make sure we're looking out for each other. Thank you.
I think a lot of that comes, and we will be looking at those. This right here is preliminary, just to make sure. It's kinda the dangling carrot kinda, so to speak, so we can say, hey, we want you, you want us, and we'll try to figure out all the things that go along with that. The Commerce Department, I assume, in North Carolina and the federal government, has already vetted all their processes before it becomes to us, so a lot of that will be taken into consideration, ma'am.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens' comments on this at this time? Any questions from the Board of Commissioners? With that, I will close the public hearing. I will ask for a motion, motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Sheehan. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Keep up the good work. Tell Marty we said hello. This concludes tonight's public hearing, and we will move forward. The next item is the approval of the business agenda. There are any revisions of the business agenda or items that need to be pulled.
I would like to pull X, please.
Item X. Item X will be pulled by Commissioner Cloninger. Do I hear a motion to approve the business agenda with item X pulled for, by the consent, from the consent agenda? Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Bailey, any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. A portion of the board's, next item, citizens' recognition, a portion of the board's agenda is set aside for the purpose of allowing citizens the opportunity to offer comments and suggestions. The comment period is not intended to require the commission or staff to answer any questions or provide a response. Question requiring a response shall be answered as soon as possible through the county manager's office. Citizens' recognition tonight will be limited to three minutes. As I call your name, please step to the podium. And the first citizen to speak up is Mr. Joshua Brown. Ms. Susan, while he's coming, do you care to speak on anymore? Are you gonna keep, you're gonna go again, okay. You'll be next.
Joshua Brown, 1149 Knolls Drive, Mount Holly, North Carolina, 28120. Mr. Chairman and County Commissioners, I come here tonight to speak in regard to the contract with the fire departments and the firefighters association relationship. Leadership isn't easy and it's always evolving. It takes accountability, integrity, morals, and self-motivation. When things aren't right, it's called out and shed light on, and worked towards a progressive goal. It's admitting to not being right all the time and knowing your idea may not be the best, but the overall goal of leadership is to educate lead individuals to work together to achieve results that would be impossible to accomplish alone. We, the county, and us as fire chiefs, we have failed at this relationship. Over the years, we have not communicated, we have not educated, we have not been here for both sides to explain things when there have been questions and doubts of what, what are the, what's the verbiage that are in the contract? What is NFPA 1720? What are all these things that are being included in here that may not understand because it's not your lingo? You don't do it day in and day out, like we do, vice versa. Things that y'all do day in and day out and deal with, I would have no understanding of, and I, it would behoove me to come to you and say, hey, explain this to me so I can get a better understanding of, of doing this. Moving forward, we need to remember our priorities and take a self-evaluation. We all need to look at ourselves and figure out with where we're at in this county. We're not getting slower, we're not stopping building, we're progressively getting bigger, faster, more populated, alright? Customer service is a driving factor. Every time we go somewhere, we walk in, what do we want? Hey, how are you? What's going on? What can I do for you today? What do you, what do we think the citizens expect when they call 911 for any emergency that goes on, whether it's fire police or EMS? So the one thing I just wanna put onto our plate for all of us to think about is if we had to call 911 tonight because your house, or you woke up and looked out your window and we saw our neighbor's house on fire, what are we expecting of the fire service to show up? What do we watch on TV? What did the TV show show to us? But in real life, what are we gonna do when the fire department shows up and things are done? Is that what we were satisfied with? We have a lot of knowledge, we have a lot of education in this, in this county. A lot of loyalty to these communities that have been there, and we want to work towards that and do that. We have the population of the firefighters, we have the people coming that wanna do this, and we want this relationship to work because as soon as we end this meeting, currently going on right now, people are calling 911. They need the fire department, they need the police, they need the EMS. This is one thing that for the fire service for so long, just being the good old boys and the volunteers, it's just been pushed back. We've been able to do with what we've done because people lived in the community, but we're to a point now where we're getting so busy that we can't get in the car and get to the fire station when the fire whistle goes off and get a truck in route quickly. People demand results. Our results as fire chiefs, I can tell you now, we want fire trucks staffed. We want them out the door within two minutes, day or night, getting to the scene of the fire. In some parts of this county, one thing we have to remember is that we don't have hydrants, and we have to require special trucks to bring those, and that cuts down on our manpower. So that is the need for increased staffing of those things. So I just want us to work forward to that and know that we are here. I want y'all to understand that we're with this. I know it's been bumpy over the last few months, but we're gonna get through that, okay? Because, Mr. Chairman, I know right now if you called 911 and your house is on fire, I'll be getting out of bed tonight and coming. And everybody else in this county, municipalities and volunteers, we all rely on each other. Municipalities rely on us. When Gastonia has a major fire, it depletes their whole city, who's the first people they call? Send the county departments in to call them to assist. When we need help, we look out for the municipalities. It's a good, strong working relationship that everybody has their head in, the right focus of what we're doing. We just got the, the waters have been muddied a little bit, and we just need to get the rains back on that.
I want, usually we don't speak to this, I wanted to ask you a question, and Adam, I guess if you, Robbie, and Mark, and Josh, I spoke about this a while back with Mark about, and you guys, about putting together something, whatever it looked like, so somebody called 911. And basically what it is, is what the fire, we would start with, you know, communications and how that responded. And then we'd say, okay, if you needed Mark, what would happen if it was for gyms, or if it was for fire? And basically you guys go through a routine, what the questions may be, obviously it's gonna be through a different thing, but what happens to expect what, when people come? I think that's really good to, to try to put a, I'm a visual person, so I wanna see what happens. So if you don't mind, Adam, I know, it don't have to be anytime quick, obviously before the channel gets cut off, so people can see it. But I'd like to see if maybe try to work on that over the next couple of months or just time. Just, I think that'd be really good for everybody to kinda see what the expectation is for what happens when you come to somebody's house. What the, what the, we don't, we don't actual fire, but I mean, we wanna see what happened. I think that'd be really good for, for how that plays out. I know Mark, we've talked about it at length before about what they would do, you know. It, it's just, I think, especially in time of chaos, we need to do that, but I do appreciate your comments.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Ms. Susan, I'm not gonna attempt that loud, I'll just call you Ms. Susan right now.
I appreciate it, Mr. Brown. Think of a Snicker bar, flip it around, it's Barsnica. Probably the only one you'll ever meet, aside from, I should go by Craig, there's plenty of us around. But wanted to thank you all again. Just wanted to put out a comment or a suggestion, and I hope this is the right time to do so. But with the notification to property owners when there's a rezoning request or even a development request, if we can make those signs for rezoning a bit taller and not hidden in the kudzu, that would be greatly appreciated. And something that can be read at 45 miles an hour as we go by the properties, so we can try to figure out what's going on in advance, would be much appreciated by the neighboring residences. And if notification can be sent besides just the adjoining property owners, that'd be great. I appreciate it, everybody.
And I would let Jamie and him address that on, obviously, we only send it to the adjacent property owners, but I mean, obviously, if something's happening in that community, maybe we can find a way to better serve something and maybe put it on the TV of what's coming up as far as some of the things. It is good information, but apologize, I'm a little fast.
Quite alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item's the approval of the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda with item X pulled? Motion made by Commissioner Kieger, seconded by Commissioner Bailey, any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The next item is, item X was pulled from the agenda. Ms. Cloniger.
I have no questions, I just wanna be able to have my vote.
Separate vote?
Separate vote. Thank you.
Motion called for a separate vote, let me get to... Just so everybody's aware, item X is public works to authorize the county, county manager, county attorney, and the designated to execute condemnation actions to acquire permanent utility easements on Tryon Elementary Waterline Project Extension. Do I hear a motion to approve? Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Kieger, any discussion? I'm sorry?
Chair, if I may, offer a small amount of explanation. There is one property that is pending signing the approval for the right of way that we're going to use, the existing DOT right of way. There's one property that's in an estate, there's one member of the state that has not been able to execute action on that, and we're taking this action to condemn it with the majority of the property owners being in agreement to fulfill, from the information that I've received. Mr. Maxwell's nodding his head, so I am correct in terms of that. That's why I agree to sponsor the action. We don't want these ARPA funds to be held up for this water line that will provide potable water not only for Tryon Elementary, but for all the residents between the Ramser Road and Bessemer City, where it will intersect with the Bessemer City Water System and Tryon School. At the same time, providing potable water and adequate water pressure for Tryonada Volunteer Fire Department to have the ability to sprinkle their dayroom, where they have firefighters that will be spending time at night. This will give them the ability to meet all the code requirements by the Fire Commission or Fire Inspection requirements for the state of North Carolina and Gaston County to allow them to have people spending the night there without being in violation. That's the reason for that particular action. It's not to impede anyone's right or impugn the eminent domain on those individuals. This, this project has to be completed by a certain time date, and we are at that threshold that we need to move forward with this project. The bids are in, it actually came in under our expected budget, which is a good thing, 'cause we can really reallocate those other ARPA funds in other areas if we have a shovel-ready project that meets the criteria of, of the ARPA agreement. But that's, that's what this is about. If anybody wants to, has any other questions, I'll be glad to try to answer that.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Kieger, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It's 5-2, Madam Clerk. No items were added tonight. Appointments, Commissioner Fraley?
I got two, Mr. Chairman. One, Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, Charles Vincent, and the other to the Child Fatality Local Review Team, Jamie McConnell.
I'll second that. All in favor? It is unanimous, hey, you two, we're gonna vote, hello? Hey, gonna vote on his appointment? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Commissioner Sheehan?
None at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bailey?
None at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cloninger?
I have two appointments. One is for Youth and Love for Gaston County Planning and Zoning Board, and also one for the Transportation Advisory Board is Daryl Barber.
Seconded by Commissioner Hovis, any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Commissioner Hovis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one appointment, reappoint, excuse me, appointment of Bill Downey to the Child Fatality Local Review Team.
Commissioner Fraley seconded, any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Commissioner Kieger?
Dr. Ed Smith to the Child Fatality Local Review Team, Patrick Mumford to the Transportation Advisory Board, representing the Chamber or Economic Development, and then Thomas Gray, Travel and Tourism.
Seconded by Commissioner Fraley, any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. I have two for the Gaston County Planning and Zoning vacancy received by Mr. Lee Brooks, and also JCPC, application received by Kevin Oliver. Seconded by Commissioner Fraley, any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Reports, Commissioner Fraley? Commissioner Sheehan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Several things here. Been quite busy, like all of us have. But a couple things I wanted to touch on real quick. On the 16th, myself along with Commissioners Cloniger and Hovis, we attended the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Tryon Resolves. That event was very well attended with double the anticipated attendees there, which was awesome to see. On the 23rd, I was in attendance at the AM Optimist Great Travel Giveaway at the Gastonia Conference Center along with Commissioners Cloniger and Bailey. That was a fantastic event for an organization that supports our community extensively. On the 25th, I participated in the 44th Annual Invitational Golf Tournament for the Piedmont Council Boy Scouts, which there was another great turnout there at Kramer Mountain. Fantastic organization for our youth in this county. Lastly, last Tuesday, I made a visit, impromptu visit, to our beloved courthouse. I wanted to get a tour, a true perspective of what goes on there day to day, the processes and their daily routine. I exhibited some concerns, so much so that I want to do a revisit. And I'd like to invite the entire Commissioner Board to attend. I've already spoken to county staff, I've got a couple that are willing to come for that visit as well. I think that would be very eye-opening for us all. Because once we do that, if you see what I saw last week, there will be no more conversations about potentially cutting five physicians. There's gonna be conversations about adding 25 physicians. So I hope I can get some interest from this board to go with me on that revisit. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Just for that, we have to have two, just to make sure that we break it up in a four, in a three and three, just so, just so we're all aware of that. So whenever we wanna put those together, we'll put those together with staff and with that. So that'd be great for you to do that. Also, I'd like to know what you scored in the golf tournament.
We don't wanna discuss that tonight, Mr. Chairman. That'll be a private conversation.
It's a need in that place.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes, sir, just a couple of things. On the volunteer fire departments, I've heard of a number of people talk about these. And, you know, I was one of the, I think the only one really that voted against the, the funding at that, at that, at that level. And I've talked to a number of volunteer fire departments throughout the county. I'm not gonna point out any certain station, because I think they're all much needed. But one of the things that was pointed out by the volunteer firemen themselves was not necessarily the volunteers, because a lot of the volunteers are from other full-time fire departments throughout the county. They were, their concern was some of the full-time firemen. And they were saying some of the ones that were full-time wasn't meeting some of the qualifications to, to be firemen, or they were either dismissed by other agencies and not able really to function up as a fire, a, a true fireman. I don't know that for a fact. It was a concern of mine. I am looking in further to it. And I think the, the contract that everybody signed kind of put that in perspective of what we expect from some of the volunteer fire departments. I think they're, they're severely needed in this county. One of the things I had mentioned a while back was, you know, when, when I was going to East Gaston back in the early 80s and, well, late 70s and early 80s, we had volunteer fire departments come to the high schools, come to the middle schools, and recruit young people to start then. We don't see that anymore. And, you know, the churches that I go to now, South New Hope Road, when we have our trunk or treat, everybody is everywhere until the fire, the fire department comes up. When the fire truck comes in, every one of the kids go to the fire truck. You can forget anything else. So I feel that, you know, we have, can have a very good qualified volunteer fire departments throughout the county. And I think understaffing was one of them. Why not reach out to some of the young people and giving them, getting them started, even at the county level? So, you know, have some type of recruitment school or summer camp for that. I would be more for that than, than anything. So that's just my thoughts on that. The other thing is with the courthouse staffing. I've discussed with a, a number of people, sheriff's office, other departments in the courthouse. And, oh, and by the way, my numbers at the work session was wrong, me and the manager looked at it, and I was two people off. And, oh, and by the way, my numbers at the work session was wrong. Me and the manager looked at it, and I was two people off that would have been required at that point. If you filled the, all the courtrooms with 17 people and filled all the stations that were needed, it would have been at least 29 people. And I think they have 20 at the courthouse right now currently, I think. So that would be actually an extra nine people, just starting off, and that would be the required positions. That's no extra people or needed for breaks or vacation or anything else. So it's one of the things we do have to look at. It's serious. And I had mentioned today, I talked with a few people, and I was at the sheriff's office back in the 90s when the county got sued for not enough people in the, in the jail, and the county lost that lawsuit, and the whole county felt that. We, we, we had to spend a whole lot of money. And if somebody, one of our citizens, or one of our deputies, or one of our judges, or people that works in the court, actually got hurt and it was because of lack of security, I would hate to see another lawsuit like that. So, and that's just my, my two cents on that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kloniger?
I wanted to report that I attended the downtown Dallas Coffee and Conversation that was held there in Dallas. I also went to the Legislative Day that they had in Mount Holly, and I also attended the send-off for Miss North Carolina to go to Miss America Paget. That's all.
Ms. Hovis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have a report, but I would like to comment in reference to the paid positions for volunteer firefighters. The qualifications for both the volunteers and the paid staff was addressed in the previous contract, which was dated in 2013. Those qualifications and requirements as to the requirements by the state of North Carolina are still the same and are still what's mentioned in the current contract that they've all ratified. Those qualifications are without exception. If someone is making comments that people that we have hired are not, I suggest they contact myself, and I will hold them in, that conversation in confidence. They need to state the names of those individuals, and we will fully, we will fully pull all those records, because we, as a county, will not allow that to happen. We haven't allowed that to happen with gyms. They have to have proper certification, and wherever that's happening, I'm sure the fire people who are here today, present, understand the requirements of us meeting all that criteria. And it goes beyond just small criteria. It's, it's proper licensure to drive these vehicles that have special license requirements and all types of other things. The Level 1 EMT training that's required by all first responders. It's very extensive and very complete. It takes hundreds of hours, correct me, gentlemen, if I'm wrong. It takes hundreds of hours for these people to be certified to perform this vital function in Gaston County. And to my knowledge, through my position as liaison between this board and the Fire Commission, we have no one, no one, who is on those vehicles attending to a fire call that isn't fully certified. And I would welcome someone that wants to share that with you to take the opportunity to share that with me, because I am the individual appointed by this board to be the liaison to that. And I will be more than happy to take that in confidence and make sure that that's done, because we have to do that. I know all the fire chiefs that I've spoken to, that I spoke to in the hall after they all signed, or were in agreement with other than a couple small pieces of the contract. I went out and speak to them, thanking them for being here and had that conversation with them, that we will always listen to what they have to say and try to support their mission, because we have no desire to create a county-wide fire department. And that was some of their concerns. I've still heard that issue by some people in the organization since they've all signed a contract, but that is not Gaston County's direction. That's not where we're trying to go. They perform a vital service. They're vital members of our community, and we would never be that disparaging to them or their actions. But thank you, Mr. Bailey, for bringing that to my attention.
Mr. Keger?
All right. I would like to mention that Mr. Hovis and I attended the 118th Annual Conference of the North Carolina Association of Commissioners, and it was well-attended, and I have to admit, Mr. Hovis did a great job as our voting delegate. And then, real brief, attended the college board meeting yesterday. I just want to, it's just some good news to throw out there. The college offers 61 degree programs now, and there are a lot of four-year liberal arts schools that don't offer that many, along with diploma and certificate programs. Over half of all the courses are offered online, completely, the whole program are offered online now. And they awarded almost 900 associate degrees over the past two semesters. Named by USA Today as one of the top 250 vocational schools in the United States in 2025. And enrollment for the 24-25 school year was 8,700 students. And at the meeting yesterday, I found out that for this first semester, they broke a record that has stood since 2010 for enrollment. I'm not sure what that number is, but it's somewhere north of 6,000 students going to Gaston College this semester. And just a couple other little pieces of information. They have the number-one LPN nursing program in the state of North Carolina from 2021 through this year. And they're the only community college in North Carolina with a textile program and a state-of-the-art textile training facility. Transfer admission guarantee partnerships with 11 of our state universities, and I'll just leave it there.
Thank you, sir. I don't have really a report. I wanted to give a shout-out to Mark Bolick and his team. A lot of people don't know what Mark and them do here at the county, and they're down hidden in the back, back there, Brian, to keep some whipped into shape, but they've been helping our community needs through some construction values and different values of things that we do. We get money from different places, but I want to say thank you, Mark, for what you do. Not the best-looking person down in that department, but I'll tell you, you guys work hard, and I just want to, I saw you here, I wanted to recognize you for that. But county managers' report. You don't want to talk about your broken foot? How'd that happen? I'd like to know how that happened, sir. County attorney?
No report, sir.
Are there any other matters need to come forward to board at this time? I have one. The work session for September 9th is canceled due to lack of business items. The clerk will be sending out that notice later on this week, and that will be... I need to see, I have a piece of paper here for each one of you guys to come by and just check off on, and if you don't mind doing that, just come by and check off on something that you see here, and that way we can do some... It was in lieu of what you guys submitted, I just don't want to go into closed session, do, we can do it here. But it was, it was, it was all the, just want you guys to say that you saw the evaluation, so it wasn't anything. Does that make you guys happy? Did you have to go into closed session then? So with that, this concludes our work session, our, concludes our meeting for tonight, our combined work session, regular meeting for September 23rd, 6:00 PM, here in the Harley B. Gaston Junior Public Court Forum Courthouse. Thank you for watching. If you have any questions, please remit those to Donna S. Buff. The S is for spectacular. 704-866-3196. Good night, Donna.